All right, um, so tonight's work session is going to be a discussion on um. GMA, IGA's, things of that nature. Mr. Cody Bird's gonna be um presenting to us. Uh, Mr. Bird, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a work session. I've prepared some presentation slides. But I'd like you to consider it more of an open discussion. Feel free to stop me if you have a question on the subject matter. None of it's particularly detailed and complicated. Um, but what we really wanted to do was provide some background context. For what is an IGA, what is a GMA? We like to throw acronyms around and we wanted to put some meat on the bones for these. Um, and to kind of prime you for what this is going to include in the future. Um, this is kind of a background and alignment work session for our board. In the future, we would anticipate having a joint work session between our board and the Board of County Commissioners. To really start to dive into what an intergovernmental agreement or IGA could look like between the county and the town. Um, so this is kind of the precursor to a larger conversation. But I thought it was important to make sure that we all have some alignment on the same page in terms of what it could be and the specific topics that we might want to in that type of region. So I have that um. Slide presentation that was in the packet and I'm going to share that here so we can see it on the monitor and those at home can can see. Give it a second, there's always a little bit of a delay. One going, yes, there it is. Okay, so. Quickly here, what I've been intending to cover are intergovernmental agreements or IGA's. Growth Management Area, GMA, and then at the end, we'd like to get some feedback from the board on specific topics that we might want to include in an IGA between the town and the county. So let's start with IGA's. This is intended to be a broad overview. Um, and an intergovernmental agreement is simply a document or a tool. That enables two governmental entities to collaborate and work together to achieve uh mutual collaboration on a topic of mutual concern. Um, broadly speaking, it's it's just an agreement between two parties. Um, but more specifically, we have IGA's for a lot of different topics. And many times you'll have multiple IGA's kind of layered in together with between two municipalities for specific topics. So that that way, if you have. Multiple topics of concern that you want to cover, you don't get one bottom down because you can't agree on the others. So a lot of times you'll have multiple uh different layered agreements. Um, intergovernmental agreements are allowed by Colorado State statutes. It allow, it specifically allows governmental entities to work together and in the. Uh, as we'll dive into a little bit deeper here, um, in just a moment. Um, specifically, the state enabling statutes for planning zoning allows municipalities or uh governmental entities to work together through an IGA to achieve. Land development goals for areas outside those jurisdictions. And so we're gonna, we're gonna touch on that topic a little bit more specifically in just a moment. Um. I had some examples lined up um for, just for reference, we do have IGA's with the fire district for cooperation and service provision and impact fee collection. We have an IGA with. We the nine one one for emergency services, solid waste policy council, uh opioid abatement. We have lots of IGA's. So they're they're not intended to be limiting, um, but uh opportunities to provide that collaboration with other agencies. Um. Specifically, what we're gonna get into tonight is an IGA for land development, and that's for areas outside the town boundaries. Within the boundaries of a town of Wellington, we have jurisdiction to legislate, create our development practices, our standards. Implement our comprehensive plan, but we've also identified um through our planning practices. Areas outside of the town that we expect that we're going to grow into in the next ten to twenty years. And what we think is likely to occur in those areas, but we don't have jurisdiction there. And so, one of the ways that we can get, not necessarily jurisdiction, but agreement with the county for how we're going to mutually plan for those areas. Or a whole host of things that we'll dive into, um, is through this tool called the IGA. Um, it does create a mutually binding and enforceable plan within the jurisdictions. We have to agree to what those plans are. Um, and it's for that shared vision. So we have to create the vision for what that's going to look like and then find the terms that both parties can agree to. One important thing of note that that the IGA allows us to do is, and I put this on the slide, is protect the legislative powers of each jurisdiction. This has been vetted in state law a couple of different, different ways and different times. Um, but there's an element that you'll often see. Uh, and you'll hear it referenced, Mr. Sapiency bring, will bring it up from time to time, that we can't. Create rules that bind future boards to do something and we can't create in an intergovernmental agreement, we can't. Bind another agency to do those things for their future boards. Each board has the ability to legislate those broad policy topics to better the community and meet those community goals. So we can't agree to an agreement that says that we're not going to protect that power. The IGA through defining these are the things that we agree on, this is how we can collaborate. And we'll include provisions in there that say, um, the parties can breach this agreement. Or these are the things that would be a breach of this agreement, and these are the penalties or the consequences that we agree on mutually. If we breach that contract. That way, if the IGA is no longer serving an entity down the road, you can't just say, well, we're not gonna do it and you can't do anything about it. The the penalties or the consequences are already defined as to how you collaborate to get out of that agreement or what happens if you choose not to do those mutual obligations. So as I mentioned, um, an IGA um is intended to do two things. One is identify the specific objectives that you're trying to achieve. Um, and the others, it applies to a defined area. Um, so the specific objectives, and I've outlined some examples here relative to land development. Obviously, different IGA's for different purposes might have different objectives. Um, but these are some of the broad objectives that we would be in an IGA, including who has the decision-making authority. Um, as we'll dive into the GMA here or Growth Management Area. Um, the town doesn't have jurisdiction outside of our town boundaries, but if we want to accomplish something, the IGA could say. The county may agree to enforce something for the town in that area. Uh, which also speaks to the defined area. It has to be divided. It can't just be the town saying, we want the county to do this broadly across the whole county. Well, we don't have. Jurisdiction that's fine. So, um, it does outline how we work together in that way. Um, the specific objectives is implementing a plan. Uh, if it's lead a nine one one, that's a plan or a service and how we're going to work together. Um, in this instance, uh, Growth Management Area is implementing the town's comprehensive plan. For how we envision those areas that the town's going to grow into, um, and identifying that through the G, the IGA to help, have the county help us achieve those goals. Um, annexation is a process that's outlined in state statutes. It's very uh step-by-step procedural in nature. Um, and it has certain criteria that have to be satisfied. There are provisions for what happens if a property becomes completely surrounded by the town. And what we, and we have a couple of instances of that in Wellington, where a county property is completely surrounded by town boundaries. The town's policy currently is that we won't annex a property without the consent of the property owner requesting it. Um, an enclave where it's fully surrounded is another provision that's allowed by law that the county can say you have to annex it because we don't want to duplicate services for that area. The county has not done that. We know that that. Um, possibility is always out there for the county to say, this is, now is the day you're gonna have to do that. We have two or three instances of that in town. Um, an IGA for growth management areas and urban service boundaries could identify. How, when and 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 love, how and when to accomplish those things. It's not currently defined other than the county can make us do it. Um, so we're gonna, I'm gonna stop on that list because we're gonna dive into more of these examples in more detail in just a moment. And then I want to touch briefly on. The growth man. Management area is one of those areas that we want to specifically uh include. Put in an IGA for how we think that would be and get the kind of support for that. Things to consider could be intersection, intersections like um County Road fifty-eight, nine twenty-five, how to handle that area. Um, how to handle Alcaton Road, which is outside of our boundary, but in our GMA. Uh, and the transportation connection corridors like Giddings Road or County Road nine going past Budweiser. It's outside of our jurisdiction. It's inside the county. Fort Collins has a similar view for what areas in their growth area might look like. Um, and so that transportation corridor is something that we could include to identify how that is, those services are going to be designed, developed and coordinated. Um, rivers or streams, we do have Box Elder Creek, which transcends uh multiple jurisdictions. Um, so how to handle that corridor to protect the stream, the environs around it. Trail planning along that corridor, all the things that we could incorporate into an IGA, but it does need to be defined as to area extent and purpose. So without further ado, I've already alluded to it several times. We'll just dive into growth management areas or GMAs. Um. The growth management areas, I mentioned, is an area that's outside the town's current boundaries. Ours is defined in our comprehensive plan and that the um, actually I'll have another slide, that's why we. Um, it's a, the GMA is a guide for the future land use, what the town envisions those areas would be. We caught, when we defined our GMA and our comprehensive plan, we looked at things from transportation connections and corridors. We looked at, um, specifically, a lot of detail went into infrastructure provision. Did not get support from the county or surrounding residents and it ultimately did not get approved. Um, but when we looked at that closer, even our prior GMA in the twenty fourteen comprehensive plan. We didn't feel confident that we'd be able to uh extend utilities in a cost-effective and efficient manner. To serve some of those areas, and we actually pulled some of those areas out of our growth management area based on topography, um, elevation changes where it's difficult to provide. Sewer cost effectively because we rely on gravity flow, lift stations are expensive, and some of those areas didn't have the. Density or developable, um. The intensity to develop those in a way that would make it cost-effective to provide sewer services, so we removed them. Other areas where we did feel we could reasonably extend services for water and sewer. Um, that were in the path of growth in that twenty-year timeframe, we included those new areas in our growth management area. Um, so one important thing of note, and this came up a couple of times when we were going through our, our comprehensive plan. Um, the town was. Somewhat accused of trying to put additional controls on properties that were outside of our town limits and that we were zoning those areas, and that's not the case. Confusing though it may be, um, identifying a growth management area and a future land use area outside of our boundaries. Gives us zero regulatory authority to enforce those provisions. It's a guide, it's a document, and we're looking twenty years into the future, estimating what we think is going to happen and what we can reasonably serve and do. Uh, but it gives the town no authority to say, this shall be the way it's done because we don't have those properties within the town limits. That area is still under the county jurisdiction.
Does that having the GMA uh protects us from having other townships encroaching on us?
Not if it's not recognized by the other jurisdictions.
Okay, so we'd have to have them togethered.
And.
That's the idea.
It's a, it's a layered approach to apples.
But that would protect us in the future if we could get this through. We just can't throw out whatever we want.
You're right, yes.
Yeah, right, yes. Subject to mutual agreement.
Right.
Okay. And then turn that one on.
First step, right?
It is.
Failing to plan.
Absolutely, yeah.
And great question, Tristi, thank you. Um, so. So yeah, to to tie back to that, um, because it's not a regulatory tool, the way to make it regulatory is to enter into IGA's with the other jurisdictions where we all agree. This is the growth management area or GMA that the town has recognized, and the county might choose to recognize that with us. The same could be true for Fort Collins and possibly Timneth is their growth management areas uh close to where our southern boundary is. Um, and so those are, right now, we're really talking about an IGA with Laramore County. The others may be additional steps down the road where it could be separate IGA's with, between each um community, or it could be a joint IGA with multiple parties involved in that same agreement.
Right, yeah. Now. Timneth comes up to, what is it, how far we're?
Fifty-two?
Yes, fifty-two.
Fifty-two, fifty-two and Douglas are the same. I have to go back to the map.
I think they're the same.
But if we don't approach on theirs, if we do an ID or a GMA, we'd just have to have an agreement with the county on that? Or we have to have with Timneth too, since we're getting close to their boundary?
Both eventually.
Yeah, it it could eventually be both, I think. Um, just kind of logically in in my mind, the the county, since we're already adjacent to their boundaries from ecological first step. And the counties might have different um topics that need to be included in that and versus Timneth might have a different set of criteria that we need to agree on with them.
Do they go Richards Lake or Douglas Road?
I'm sorry, Richards Lake.
Richard, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier. I think, thank you for the correction. It's Richards Lake.
Oh, this area, right.
And so just for reference, I'll pause for a second. I did give you some handouts that weren't in your packet. They're they're all public documents. I pulled them out of um our comprehensive plan. Um, Fort Collins Comprehensive Plan, Laramore County's Plan. And I I wanted you to have those, just because it's, nothing's easier to reference than a map. For those areas. So um, I did give you a couple of pages there just for reference as we work through this. So I think I've alluded to this too, and I don't mean to be repetitive. Um, but the purpose of defining a growth management area from a town's perspective is. Um, we want to have an efficient and fiscally responsible extension of municipal services. Um, particularly our infrastructure, water and sewer. Um, we don't want to duplicate services with other service providers. On the handout that I gave you, the first page for Wellington's GMA, you see the very um southern portion there. There's a crosshatched area. That's Box Elder Sanitation Service Area District, and there's an area of overlap where Box Elder Sanitation has the right to serve. For sewer services and the town also has a right to serve. Neither one of us are particularly close to serving that area right now, so we have an IGA with Fox Elder Sanitation that basically defines. Uh, we'll work together to figure out how to cost-effectively serve that area. Um, and the same would be true for our water provision. Elko has services nearby, but they're not particularly well-equipped to um provide municipal level services. Um, we don't want to have both parties racing to get to an area and spending millions of dollars on pipelines and infrastructure if only one's gonna get to serve at the end of the day. Not good practice to compete over areas when we can agree on who's gonna serve one. Um, another purpose as we alluded to was implementing local land use regulations. I'm gonna come back to this in just a second too. Um, but we don't have the authority to implement our zoning or other development standards outside our boundaries. We can partner with the county through an IGA to identify agreeable terms where they will. Enforce some or a portion of our standards to help us achieve our long-range vision and still protect the property rights. Of the uh unincorporated Laramore County properties. Um, so the growth management. Also, uh, the growth management area also creates clear expectations. Our comprehensive plan defines what the level of service that we think we could provide for different commercial types. Um, in terms of transportation access, rail access or freight access. Um. Utility infrastructure provision where we can serve a higher level of intensity versus areas west. We currently can't provide uh significant infrastructure there, so we view that as being lower density residential as opposed to high-intensity commercial or light industrial uses. Um, that gives a clear expectation for the town officials and staff. As we're growing, to make sure we know what it takes to get where we're headed. And for the private property owners and the county and for their enforcement to know. This is what the town expects to be able to serve, so we're not going to approve a a huge compound of. High intense needs where the town's not able to serve it in the future. Um, so it it does help provide that interaction for where we should be working towards mutually. Um. Talked about development pattern intensity and designing infrastructure standards. The county engineering groups have standards for rural roadways with open ditches. Town standards typically providing closed stormwater sewer with curb and gutter. We require sidewalks that county typically doesn't on a rural road. And when we, when our town roads join across county roadways, we have a disparity in what standards to apply. An IGA, or a growth management area defined, this is where the town's likely to serve. The IGA can help inform. This is how we handle that transition between uh town roadways and county roadways. I talked about the others. I guess I'll throw maintenance and management in there. Um, where the county maintains gravel roadways. We have some roadways in the town's GMA that are currently maintained and operated by the county. As we grow into those areas, we would want to coordinate with the county for, we intend to pave those roads. Please don't put a lot of, you know, interest or money and investment into changing that roadway in a way that's not consistent with our vision and goals. Will partner with you to improve the roadway the way we need to when that time comes. Um, again, avoid duplication of services, but have a clear plan for how to take care of what's there until it needs to change. So going back to the maps, I want to touch on this just briefly. I've I've put two images on this slide. Um, the image on the bottom left is uh from our comprehensive plan, that dashed line that's kind of elliptical in shape. Um, is our, the, basically what would constitute a three-mile area from the town's center. The three-mile um provision is a statutory requirement. All statutory towns are required to adopt a three-mile plan. That's a plan that uh informs that these are the areas in which the town could exercise its annexation authority. Um, and our, our arterial roadway standards. The town, through our process and our comprehensive plan, identified that we're not likely to serve those areas outside of our GMA. So we adopt our comprehensive plan and growth management area plan as our three-mile annexation extension area. We do that by resolution, usually the first meeting of every year. Um, we identify our. Growth management plan as our three-mile plan. So it is broader than what we would like to pursue as our GMA. And then the the image on the right is a um, a larger version uh of the same image, but with our future land use pattern, density and intensity open late on it. Our comprehensive plan was last updated in twenty twenty-one. I think most of you know that or were involved in some capacity. Uh, but I threw that in here too as a reminder. We did postpone conversations with the county regarding intergovernmental agreements. In order to finish the comprehensive plan, uh, we've done, we updated our land use code, and we're currently looking at engineering standards and some other things too. To help our infrastructure master plans to help inform the conversations with the county for how to uh take that next step through an intergovernmental agreement. Um, I also wanted to throw in here, and these are my last couple of slides, and we're gonna move into some more discussion. Um, I did include maps from uh Fort Collins Comprehensive Plan and Laramore County's Comprehensive Plan, just for for reference and visual effect here. Um, Fort Collins identifies their growth management area as going uh north. But they also envision protecting the community separator or open space between uh the jurisdictions. Wellington has a similar goal outlined in our comprehensive plan uh for protecting community uh buffers. And our board has discussed that a couple of times in strategic plan sessions to make sure that we protect community identity by preserving open space between jurisdictions. Um, so Fort Collins has that same goal.
Do we know what Timneth does?
Um. I believe that they do. And I think that's where some intergovernmental cooperation could be used to identify where the open space, the mutually agreed upon open space, the county. And this, this graphic that I've shown you here, it's also referenced in your uh, the handout that I gave you and I put some additional accompanying text. Um, the county updated their comprehensive plan a couple of years ago. And in doing that process, they recognized that the front range communities in Laramore County are starting to grow together. And at that time, particularly with Timneth for growth management areas, there was a little bit of a, I'm gonna be careful with my terminology. Um. There, there was a sentiment that that some communities were growing faster or thinking that they were gonna grow faster than maybe they likely could and were. Identifying growth management areas larger than they maybe need to be. Um, and through that process with the county updating their comprehensive plan, they wanted to be a facilitator in those discussions. Um, they're in a, a challenging position where local jurisdictions are saying, this is an area that we're going to serve. And the county's saying, but wait, we still have private property rights that we have to protect and until you grow there, we have to provide the services for them. So what are, are we not including that conversation anymore? And what they proposed through coordination with staff and their public engagement process was. What are the areas that are most likely to be in that kind of hotbed of competing for um service extension and 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 growth management? And they proposed identifying those as cooperative planning areas. And that's what they've shown here. Um, I'm pointing to my screen, but on on the slide here, the potential cooperative planning area is in the county's cop plan. Um, for that space between Fort Collins, Timneth and Wellington, where the county currently has jurisdiction. And their goal is to bring those parties together to agree on how that corridor, that area would develop over time. The town of Wellington supported that proposal for for the county to participate in cooperative planning areas. So I'll pause for a second. I've only got one slide left and we can, it's really more of a discussion slide. So are there any questions about information on IGA's and growth management areas so far?
Something worthy of pointing out is the uh, both of the private conservation, the state-owned conservation properties. On this map. Um, so those obviously would be like a direct, absolutely no way could be included in any kind of. Growth. From the perspective of the town. So those are like hard, hard boundaries. So if I'm saying anything wrong, tell me, but that's something I wanted to, all the conserve plans, just kind of point out. Because when we're looking at this from a big picture, we're like, oh, all of this area, but we're like, eh, no, there's state wildlife areas there. There's. Um, other conservation lands there. Those are hard boundaries that we would never be able to address. So just something to point out, because that was something that would learn name for me.
Yeah, and if, I'll come back to that sort of hand. Um. Trustee Daly, I think that's a a great point. There are some areas that um are extremely unlikely to. Develop to any kind of an urban level density or intensity. Um, the reservoirs were, were another natural barrier or boundary. Um, we're not gonna grow west through the large north through irrigation reservoirs that are adjacent to our boundary. The state conservation land and public or state-owned land to the east are natural boundaries. Flood plains are another one that's a good defining boundary that we identify in this map.
Yeah.
Um, the one caveat that I want to throw out there on the conservation lands. Um, over a couple of decades, the county did use a tool called a rural land use plan.
Okay.
And the effect was a conservation easement. They said, we can allow you to develop this many. Houses or this, you know, operation or what have you, but to do that, you need to conserve. The remainder of that land or the residual land for agriculture, open space or some other defined purpose. And they adopted quite a few of these rural land use plans. Some are in perpetuity. Others are in it for a defined length of time, and we identified all with the same color on our future land use map. For conservation land, but some of them do have a time limit on them where. It it could become perpetually enjoined if the county takes certain steps. There is an opportunity for private landowners to buy back the rights to that residual land, and it can vary from case to case. So I just wanted to point out that there is some caveat to some of those conservation land bombs map.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I just had a real quick clarifying question for you, Mr. Bird. I, uh, you had mentioned on the. Uh, west side of the GMA that most of that would have to be low-density housing as far as I go. I'm assuming that's because distance to the water treatment plant would that be?
Um. So, so yeah.
Oh, western side, gotcha.
So there's a couple of different factors at play there. Um, one of them is. Distance and topography or elevation. Um, when you hit the, there's a ridge line um right before the reservoirs. And when you start going down gradient to the west, it becomes more challenging to uh have sewer gravity flow through our system. So that was a natural topographic uh change that caused us to want to. Caused us to want to really think hard before approving any high density type of development there. Um it could also affect lot sizes where the town could allow through uh health department procedures to allow private septic systems on larger lots. To allow some level of suburban or urban level development with the right protections in place, but it may not be on a municipal sewer. Um so there's there's options out there.
Sure.
The pump stations.
It can be live stations, they uh do become quite expensive to maintain, uh to finance them initially and then to maintain them. Um but those are options that can be considered down the road. Um and when I spoke earlier, I said to the west, um and there are some natural topographic changes. The other factor I would throw in there is as you move north and west, we know that it's going to take time. To ex- extend services to the extents of our G M A. And so since our comprehensive plan is a is about a twenty year look into the future. We define a lot of the the outer ring areas as low density uh or agricultural. Because the in the twenty year timeframe, we don't expect those to change probably at all.
Sure.
As the town continues to grow and the comprehensive plan and future land use map get updated. Those density and intensity levels could change over time to support a more urban level of uh the urban level development. As infrastructure grows with the town.
Got got it, yes, thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
So can I ask a question?
Of course.
Um if you're saying that some of these are, some of these areas that are protected have a time limit. Would it be possible to then extend the growth management area outside of those? In theory, for now, knowing that at some point these will move away or they'll become more flexible. Um and protect them as is for now, but allow ourselves to grow east or.
It it could end without um pulling out a a different kind of a map with the case by case examples. It it could, the, a lot of the areas east are owned by the state and our conservation. Uh areas or or open space areas protected wetlands for waterfowl and other types of migratory creatures. So there's some of those are probably not going to change, they're also probably in the flood plain, which would be another barrier to changing that. Um a a better example is more on the south end, the the large uh area there um just south of County Road fifty eight. That's in a rural land use plan and it's got about seventeen years left on it. Where the pro- private property owners would have an option to buy it back for their own use and eliminate the conservation easement. But that's one that I know offhand, cause we've looked at it recently, but there are other examples of that next to. Other questions?
I'd just say, looks like we got natural barriers on the west and on the east with the flood plains and the wildlife areas. So our only place to grow would be north and south, correct? If we're looking at doing that.
I think for the short term, yes, um the there, I I never wanted to say, no, we won't get to that point someday.
With the practicality of the stations and everything else, yeah.
Yeah, and and that's one of the reasons why. We plan for twenty years and we update every five to ten years because things change. As you know, circumstances change, technology, growth patterns, um there's a lot of changes, we can't predict them all. Um but currently, what we identified in the comprehensive plan was that because of where we're at now. The logical growth areas were south first, because that's where infrastructure is most readily available and it's the closest. So that's gonna be the short term growth area. Highway one corridor would be the next logical growth area around the high school. And those could, there's been some overlap. And north is gonna provide the longest range growth potential for the town, um but the challenge there is. You know, uh the old comprehensive plan said, put everything you've got towards Alcanyon Road in so many words. Um but that's three miles worth of infrastructure that we can't finance. And so the the comprehensive plan process identified that it's more logical to. Uh approve growth in the near term on in that south area where infrastructure was readily available or could be easily extended. And keep working towards Alcanyon Road, but not putting so much finances and resources into how do we get there faster? Because there's not enough development there to support the cost. Um I I will also say, never say never, um to the east, we do have some significant um. Natural buffers or barriers with state owned land and flood plain. With enough time as the community continues to grow, infrastructure can be extended across flood plains and. Just preserve their their wetlands or open spaces flood plain within the town. A lot of communities have done this for Collins as multiple examples where. Wetlands or reclaimed excavation sites and other things have become open space amenities. Um and infrastructure's gone around them, but still protect those areas.
Question up there, Alcanyon in I twenty five, I mean, I would think that would be probably a. Fairly close future, maybe truck stop, something like that. Is that something we can annex fairly easy or not, or or what's the plan on that?
It it can be done, um first firstly, we address the topic of um Alcanyon being a a future development site. We do in our comprehensive plan identify that as a commercial intersection, um that's the red color of the map here. Excuse me. Um so that is part of the the vision, the the challenge likely would be the infrastructure provision. A truck stop is probably not going to be able to by itself pay for three miles worth of water and sewer extensions. And so while we're, we wouldn't say, no, we, we don't want that. It's who's gonna pay for it, and our policy currently is development pays its own way.
Right.
Their pro forma is not gonna pencil out, they they wouldn't be able to afford that many millions of dollars, their return on investment would be so long that they would say that's a nonstarter. If they came to the town and said, will you annex this and provide those services, we might say, yeah, we would like to. But when we annex property that's outs, you know, we can do it as a, it's called a flag pole, we'd annex the road right of way all the way up to. The property, effectively you create the right of way, which is the pole, and then the flag is the property at the top, if you can imagine that. When a town does that, we have to offer and provide services to all of the properties adjacent to that right of way. And that could be a big cost if we're trying to chase. An economic development proposal for a truck stop, it might generate revenue. Is it gonna generate enough revenue for us to provide services for every property along that right of way that would have the right to access it? So I would never rule those options out, but it would take a really hard look. Um to make sure that the proposal could be supported financially, and it's a good decision for the town to pursue.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, so I wanted to conclude with a little bit of, a little bit deeper discussion on some key focus topics. Um that may wanna be included in an intergovernmental agreement with Laramie County, for now, we're gonna focus on Laramie County. Other jurisdictions, we can definitely bring back up later. So I put this in your slide deck, it's in your packet, I hope you took a little bit of time to think about it. These were some of the things that I identified in my mind that would be appropriate and important to include in. An agreement with Laramie County to help protect both the town's vision for how our growth management area. Um would be developed over time, but also protect, th- these would all be two way streets, right? Um cause we need to also protect the private property rights of the rural residents and the rural property owners. And be respectful of Laramie County's legislative ability to regulate properties within Laramie County. Um so I'm gonna leave this up here if you wanna look at it and think for a minute. And if there are other topics that you think might be worthy of including. Or if you wanna discuss a little bit deeper dive on any of these, I would like to take some notes and get some board feedback on your thoughts on this list. Other things to be added or specific details about one of these topics that I can do more research on and be prepared for a conversation between. Our board and Laramie County's Board of County Commissioners.
Um transportation planning for sure, um. When we're talking about that, I mean, are we talking roads as well, or is that more or less? Cause I know infrastructure is there, were you separating those out or? Or your thoughts there?
So I've included on this list, transportation planning and infrastructure separately. The reason I separate them is because there's gonna be different nuance to the different aspects. Um for transportation planning, we are currently in the uh upper front range transportation planning region in Fort Collins is in the M P O. Laramie County is in both for their unincorporated areas. Um that creates a a nice confusing little mix of of different entities and different pools of money. Um the transportation plan effort, my hope would be that we can agree on what are the primary routes, what are the needs there? If we can identify them and agree to work cooperatively, we may be able to leverage other sources of funding to meet those goals through T P R, M P O. And other initiatives, grants and other things. So transportation is always gonna be kind of a standalone or with with some areas of overlap. Um for how to do transportation improvements. Infrastructure I separated because there's a lot, there's different types of infrastructure. The county is currently rolling out broadband services, extension through Laramie County and touching on some of the areas around the town. Um we have a wat- we're water utility as you, as you all know. Um and we would want the county to help protect the areas that we've identified that we would likely serve so that they're not approving. Developments in the county using other water sources in our G M A. Um sewer provisions the same way, I mentioned the example with box elder sanitation earlier. Um so I'd agree with the county would want to identify if the counties are proving any level of development. But they're being respectful of the service area boundaries that we've proposed, as well as the service area potential for the other providers. Uh so that's why I separate those, I think there are some some nuanced differences.
With being in conjunction with county, uh County Road fifty eight and the interchange there. Would that put us into a better position to possibly get that developed?
It certainly could, um.
I think that would be extremely important.
Right, and so County Road fifty eight is a is a rural Laramie County roadway right now. The town has identified it as a as a future arterial with the potential future interchange. Um as well as needed infr- uh intersection improvements at. Highway one and Giddings Road kind of fifty eight intersection. So if we can identify that corridor and those needs in an I G A with the county. We may both mutually be working towards the same goal, instead of the county spending money on maintaining a. Two lane, open ditch road section when we're saying, wait, don't spend the money on on that, we think this is gonna be something bigger and we'd like those efforts to move in that direction.
I think that'd be extremely important.
Yeah, and for for Collins too, as that transportation commuting corridor expands. Um we are, the the town of Wellington is going to support um Fort Collins in a a grant application for funding to. Uh create a grade separated crossing or overpass over the railroad at Vine and Timberline. An important transportation corridor for Wellington, um we're supporting that for the for them to pursue that funding source. Um but so whenever we can identify through I G A that there's a mutual goal here. For Giddings Road or County Road fifty eight as primary transportation routes between Wellington and Fort Collins. All three entities might be working in the same direction to support each other in those goals.
Um I would be interested in more information on um the development pattern and density, and then also the development rights. Who will those or the transfer of, um as you have it listed, and then also uh trail connections and open space. Um and then infrastructure and design standards in a cooperative space as well as the financing districts. And how those are handled.
So if I understand, you're you're in support of those topics?
I'm in support of those topics, but I would also like more information about those things.
Okay, what additional information? How, do you want me to help inform what some of those topics mean?
I think more specific information related to those topics and if there are any standards in place and how those are uh handled in a cooperative space. Um or uh you know, if there are any policies in place that support. Those items in a cooperative space.
Do you wanna talk about some of those tonight?
Sure, if you want to.
I I don't, I don't, I didn't come with a lot of detailed information on each of those, but what I can do, and I'll admit. Transfer development rights is a topic that may not be intuitive, um so I'd be happy to, you know. Explain what some of these things mean tonight, and then I can bring back more detailed information on a future date.
Yeah.
Is that helpful?
That is helpful, as much information as you can provide, I think I understand on a base level, but if there are already, you know, examples of how these have been handled in other municipalities. Or areas or policies that exist within Laramie County on how they handle those with surrounding municipalities, I'd be interested in. Those um specifics.
I will definitely work on um putting some more information together around these topics. Can I quickly for tonight touch on, um let's see. You mentioned, well, let me, let me tackle transfer of development rights briefly first. Um so transfer of development rights is a a a tool and toolbox that's enabled by the statutory, the planning enabling statutes. Um it's a tool in the toolbox that says, we've identified an area um that might be. Um suitable for a higher intensity level of development like apartment complexes. But we don't have the demand for it right now, it could be a receiving zone, this is where we've identified we can support it. And then we might have another area that we say, we can't support that over here, but the zoning might allow for it. The zoning might allow up to twelve dwelling units per acre in this area, but the urban services aren't there to support it. In order for that private property owner to say, I have the potential to build this much, but the town can't support it. I would like to transfer that development right, the ability to build at that level of density or intensity. I'll transfer it over here to still get the value out of it, so I'm going to send it. To the receiving zone where the receiving zone where those, where the infrastructure can support it, say, we can take that additional. Say it's a a balance of five dwelling units per acre, we can use that over here to achieve twelve dwelling units per acre here, whereas over here it can only support seven. So that's, it's just a tool, it's, and that's a super high level view of things.
I'm like, tell me more.
It's it's a, it's, so it's a tool, and and I think what I had talked about with the with the county planning staff is that that may be a particularly useful tool. For some of the areas that might be identified by uh by our town or by another community as areas that. Wanna be preserved for open space and buffers, those private property owners might be sitting there going. All of a sudden, I thought I was gonna cash out someday, and now I've got all the jurisdictions telling me that I have no value in my land except ag.
That's where I see that being a very major part.
Yeah, and so it it does, it kinda helps protect the private property, right, where they might otherwise be able to develop along I twenty five. And capture commercial or or residential uses, but. Fort Collins and Wellington are saying, no, we're never gonna extend there, cause we wanna protect the open space, those might be the sending zones. Um we could normally develop at this level of intensity, but because of legislation, we're not allowed to. We'll send that development right over here where someone else is willing to buy the right from us in the receiving zone. And we'll capture the value and they'll capture more dollars through selling more density in that defined area. So it's a tool, the county said, yeah, we can look at that, they they don't have a policy specific to that just yet. Uh but it's one that I think is gonna be an emerging topic in the Fort Collins metro areas, all the communities can be grown together.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, that probably just scratches the surface, but it gives you an idea of kind of what that concept. Um I'll I'll move on to the one right below it for financing districts, taxing increment and special districts. Again, these are tools in the toolbox, I metro districts would be on this list also, I didn't include that one. Um but there's, there's other variants of of financing tools. Um I put that on this list because for, um and I don't wanna define every single option specifically tonight, I can bring back more information on that later. Um but a tax increment financing district um basically defines a baseline of this is the property taxable value of the property. Pre-development and after development, it might be a higher taxable value because of the investment put into it. It establishes a baseline in the increment, the difference between. The taxable value at this point in time, and then the later point in time, that value of taxes gets put back into the district improvements to pay for infrastructure. Like roads, uh a lift station, other services, um and after a defined period of time, say ten years, twenty years. Um that increment then goes back to all the taxing agencies, but if not for the increment, you wouldn't have had the infrastructure. To support that level of development, so you never would have captured the value in the first place. So it's kind of like a placeholder, and then all the taxing agencies get more benefit from it in the long run. But they wouldn't see it for forty, fifty, sixty years or longer because the infrastructure wasn't there to support it. That tax increment and other special districts require support from the county as a taxing agency. And so I threw it on this list as a as a goal that if we're talking with the county about how to provide for. um, financially responsible and fiscally conservative ways of extending services to, to areas in this mutual area of overlap, why would we not agree to use the tools that are in the toolbox to support these things? And my hope would be that the county would, would agree that they would not oppose us if we do our due diligence and present quality projects for those tools. Counties, school districts are the types of taxing agencies that tend to not dig, diving into details on some of the special financing districts and say, we just want the taxable value without understanding that you don't get it without the infrastructure. So why hold that off? What we'd like to do is get them to agree to work with us to achieve those goals.
I'm behind that one a hundred percent.
Um, the other questions you asked about were trail connections and open space amenities. Um, Wellington, Fort Collins, Laramo County, we've all identified goals in our comprehensive plans to extend trail infrastructure to connect communities with paved trails. Um, Front Range Trail, Pruder River Trail. Um, these are all goals that these communities, Timoth is in that mix as well that we would want to tie into someday too. Um, so we've all identified the goal, but we haven't identified means or mechanisms for how to work collaboratively to achieve that vision through the county open space areas or through, through the county unincorporated areas, I should say. Um, and so the IGA might identify that this is the agreed-upon connection route between communities, and the county might support that and agree that they would support us in, uh, pursuing grant funding or other opportunities to help make those a reality. Um, open spaces, I think largely kind of gets into the community separator piece as well, but it might include that Laramo County has funds available for the preservation of open space, whereas the town doesn't. Um, or we do have some tax, or, or a tax, um, what's our revenue stream from the lottery for open space areas? We have some funds that we use for parks and other, other program and things. We could agree on how to work collaboratively to use available funding sources to protect identified open spaces.
Oh, can I, I wanted to add a couple of things to the trail piece. In the comprehensive plan, uh, obviously it's mentioned several times the schools, but the other pieces beyond that that it mentions is to define criteria for level of service standards. Um, I think that would be interesting conversation as part of the GMA is like, if and when those trails do happen, like what, what will those look like? What will they include? Do they match our standards? Do we have standards? Should we do the standards? Like, these are all the questions I have there. Um, and other pieces of it within the comprehensive plan that mentions is offering equity of access to these kind of amenities. So, I think the things like highlighting how much more accessible, uh, maybe county trails are to other communities versus zero to Wellington from a connectivity standpoint. I don't know what it is from overall trail standpoint, but um, talking about that equity of, of amenities and services provided to Wellington as are available in other communities, and then the connectivity piece. Um, and having that be a major priority for us to designate the route, to designate a plan to make sure that that happens in the near future. Um, other things associated with that, I think would be like tur- tourism, and then like with roads, talking about bicycle accommodations, because a lot of people have acknowledged that Wellington would be a great location for bike races. So whether or not those roads that would be within the GMA would be not just designated for like the standard level of whatever ser- service, I guess, for roads, but whether or not they would accommodate like serious bicycle traffic. That was it for trails. Those are my notes of, from the comprehensive plan. I think that would be important to make sure they're not acknowledged or discussed in some way as part of the GMA. That's just, oh, and it's been a, a number one priority for pros forever. So, and they, they're really, really passionate about it, and it's not just trails from Fort Collins to Wellington. It's also west, it's also north, maybe up to Soapstone. Um, the, the trail concern is not just a connectivity, it really is a tourism amenities type nature, open spaces benefit. And I think we miss that a lot when we just talk about, oh, we just need to connect them. No, we need, we, lots more too. So not just worried about defining that possible route, but all the other routes too.
Thank you. I, I'm taking notes. Those are great thoughts. So I appreciate the feedback. Anything else on trails, open space? You mentioned a fourth one, Trustee Moir and I.
I think it was infrastructure and engineering design standards, which speaks to what, uh, Trustee Daly just said about the, the trails, but also extending that out into all of the other infrastructure and how we can coordinate and keep things consistent. And up to whatever standards we have or state standards or whatever that may be.
Yeah, and, and a great point, and I, I would throw in there that, you know, the, the road design standards. How, how thick is the pavement? How thick is the subgrade? What are your compaction requirements? Is it open ditch or curb and gutter? Do you have an attached sidewalk or detached sidewalk? All of those are defined in, in standards. Um, Laramo County has actually gone through this similar process with um, Fort Collins, Loveland Windsor, other jurisdictions. I currently Wellington, Estes Park and one other community, maybe Johnstown, are the only three entities that don't have an IGA with the county currently. Um, but they collaboratively, those groups have worked together to identify what's referred to as, um, LUCAST, the Laramo County Urban Area Street Standards. Um, for that exact reason, as these communities have grown over the years, they've already identified the challenges with making sure that infrastructure lines up or road and, and sidewalk infrastructure lines up. Um, and they, so they've adopted and agreed upon sort of standards, which might be an excellent springboard for us to say, yep, we agree, we adopt that too. It would be a lot simpler than recreating the wheel and making everyone, making the county go through the same process. They already have a standard that seems to work for other jurisdictions. It might work just fine for us too. Um, so I did specifically list that one separately, although it is still part of the infrastructure engineering standards.
Um, could we highlight other, other type of standards that would have major discrepancies between the county and us? So like, for example, trail standards, I don't, maybe that's including this, but, um, like if we have a lighting, they, they mentioned that, making sure that trails are well lit and safe. So that's, that's another thing. Um, so, given those are our rules for trails, like, and they're maybe included within our development plans, what's required for trails, I, I can't even recall what that might be right now, so. To understand if theirs are so different or not, that we can ask for accommodations to, you know, have them to our standards within a certain range around Wellington. So that we would automatically have them to our standards if and when that ever were to be announced.
Yes, and, and I think the, the county would, would like to say, yeah, of course, we can work with you on the design standards. How are you going to work with us to pay for that?
Right.
And so there's, that's where the agreement comes into play. We want this. They say, great, we're happy to help you. How are you going to help us achieve that goal? And that's where the IGA can define both of those things.
So on that same topic, talking about infrastructure, specifically broadband, well, any infrastructure, but broadband is what came to mind. I know the county has some really significant plans. Would we or could we talk about consolidating efforts to underground lines in any way, and if that would be benefit to Wellington to do a cost sharing for any kind of underground type projects? To maybe consider asking us if we were interested in doing any underground lines in that area? If we could tack on to that project or something. I don't even know if this would be applicable. But I know that's another project that a lot of places do, and then consolidate those efforts with other parties. Um, so you only have to go underground once and do all of those things at the same time. So, uh, would that be applicable at all?
It, it could. I think it's worth exploring, and I, I would caution that probably every, every you know, major project where you're looking at undergrounding utility lines or power lines, you should look at it on a case-by-case basis. For instance, just, and this is not a specific example, but a broad example. If the county were, were doing a road project and they needed to relocate, uh, electric lines, they would probably pay for, or through, uh, through their franchise agreement with the utility provider. They might say, we're improving our roadway and you're in the path of our road project. You need to, in terms of our agreement, you need to move your infrastructure out of the way. They may be subject, the power provider might have to move the power lines, but they're going to do it in this cheap, cheap's not the right word, but the most cost-effective way possible, which is they're going to leave it overhead and just move it the minimum that they need to move it. They don't want to acquire additional easements or right-of-way or put expense into undergrounding. Um, so they're going to do that most cost-effectively as they can. And the county is not going to be interested in paying anymore than they have to because they've got a constrained budget for their road project.
Right.
So if we come into that equation and say, well, we're, we're willing to partner and pay for some of that cost to underground it, I would caution, are we putting it in the right place?
Right.
Because they might have a, uh, like a sixty-foot road right-of-way, and our vision might be, well, that needs to be pushed out further because we don't want to bury power under where our future roadway is going to be, but we don't want to pay for right-of-way to extend it. So I, I think, look at it, and where there's opportunities to partner, we should pursue it, you know, fiscal constraints and everything to be considered.
Yeah.
But we wouldn't want to do it and then have to redo it in the future.
Right. Yeah, the same thing. I'm like, if we could do it now and partner versus doing it on our own in the future, that would be a cost savings, but there's so many considerations, so just maybe a consideration of like, to be notified or like, to consider it, I don't know, but. Who knows?
Yeah, I definitely worth considering. I'm going to make myself a note before I move on. Um, but I, I think the other piece you touched on there, Trustee Daly, is, uh, the notice, right?
Right, yes, just the.
You also, give us a head. Some smoke signal that you're doing something so we can partner if we, if we need to or want to. And what, one of the other topics on this list is the development referral and review standards.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and we can agree, define, you know, when the town has, uh, a development proposal in X, Y, or Z category, we provide notice to, which we already do provide notice to the county for many things on the fringe, but not necessarily in the middle of town. Where it's going to impact their considerations, we provide a notice. Here's what we're considering, here's the detailed information. You have an opportunity to review and provide feedback. We'll take your feedback and we'll incorporate that in this way that's defined through our IGA. And vice versa, if they have a project that could impact our future road, uh, planning processes or infrastructure provision or design standards, they refer that to us. We have an opportunity to review it and provide feedback. And a lot of times what the IGA will do is we can always send someone to a public hearing and say, we don't like this, don't approve it.
Right.
An IGA would put a little bit more teeth to that to say, if the town has feedback on a development proposal or an infrastructure proposal, the county will consider up to these things, and that has to be mutually agreed upon, but it would give us a little bit more opportunity than just a voice at the hearing to say, we don't like this.
And that would maybe apply to scenarios that are like conditional use, so which would require a specific approval from Laramo County. But if it were to be a concern to us, that we would have a larger voice in that conversation. That's kind of what, how I'm thinking of it. So like, why would, if they, if they were to approve something conditionally that maybe wouldn't be standard within that zoning, for example, that it would be detrimental to our town to be right along our boundary or where we're planning on moving to, and we might say that that's a poor choice.
Yeah.
Is that like that scenario?
Yeah, potentially, and I'll, I'll use a, just a really extreme example that's not in any way on the table that I'm aware of, but I'll just throw an example out there. If a private property owner came and they own li- land in Laramo County in our growth management area and say, we've applied to the county because we were going to put in a huge industrial meat packing processing facility.
Yep, exactly.
And the town goes, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, we've identified that area as, you know, highway commercial and, you know, retail services, that's going to have a huge detriment to our longer-range vision. Don't we have a say in this matter?
Right.
That would be, you know, a very extreme example. I'm not in any way aware of any proposal of such nature, but.
Interesting. Okay, good. Thank you. I think that's super important. That's a development referral and review standards. That's that kind of very.
And one last example from my, my past in other communities, um, under different context. Um, but we had an agreement between my former municipality and the county that if the town or city objected to, uh, a public hearing proposal, the county could still approve it, but it required a super majority. Um, so, so it, it put a lot more teeth to that voice of this was a concern. Our planning commission, I'm, again, I'm going back to my previous example in Kansas. Um, but our Kansas Planning Commission didn't support this proposal, and we submitted that to the county. They could still approve it, but they had to have a higher burden to get that approval.
I like that.
I don't know that Laramo County would agree to that. I don't want to set that, that pretext, but.
That's hardcore.
There's, there's some different ways to, to look at, what does having next, having a, you know, voice mean in these conversations?
Yeah. So obviously no, no municipalities around us have anything like that.
I don't know that for a fact. I'll have to do some, some deeper digging.
Curious, because if they do, it would be like us too, please, yes.
Yeah, send us that.
Yeah, you already made that happen then.
Those that I've seen, you know. It's a good idea, or it's, or it's an interesting idea. Always asked.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Uh, well, let's see, I would say, uh, I, I, I think everybody's had a lot, whole, whole bunch of great ideas here. I, I, in just looking at the potential cooperative planning area, obviously that, that's a pretty large piece of land. Um, I fully agree with Trustee, we in that, uh, County Road Fifty Eight obviously has to be any, uh, part of any uh, IGA agreement with Laramo County. We definitely, we would definitely want to be on the same page as far as what that's going to look like arterial-wise. I, I think we all know that that's going to be a, a big deal. I, I guess what I would say is, uh, south of that, I'm let me back up for a second here. Uh, I think one of the most important things to me is community separation in terms of open space, and I think the board's generally had some consensus around that in the past. Obviously, this area being as large as it is, I think what I would propose and maybe would like to see from the, you know, Timoth and Fort Collins and, and the county, as far as I go, would be basically anything between fifty-six and fifty-four. And then eleven all the way to Cobble Lake, and potentially have that be almost entirely open space. That way, we would have some breathing room as far as development from fifty-eight to fifty-six, uh, allowing us maximum use of the overpass potentially at fifty-eight. So I, I, I think just as, as kind of a vision, that's, that's kind of where I would be leaning with things. And then obviously, you know, your, uh, trail connections and open space amenities, you, we, pretty, you know, all that would go, would go hand in hand there. So, uh, that, that's kind of what I'd be looking at, as far as.
Just for your knowledge, uh, the agreement with Timoth identifies the cooperative planning area that the, that Timoth has agreed to at least. And in there, it's fifty-six to fifty-two and east of twenty-five. So, it's, it's slightly different than this one, but that's, that's not the same. Then, yeah, that's, that's what they've agreed to with Timoth, and of course, Timoth isn't on the west side of, you know, so. That, that's not necessarily like, that's binding, you know, or binding size, but that's, that's what Timoth is agreeing to.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I, I, I think the biggest thing really, just for me, like I said, is, is having that community se- separation. We, I don't, I would not want to see Wellington just blending into Fort Collins. I really think we need to make sure that we've got some significant open space between us, as far as I'm concerned.
Can I ask a, a theoretical question for feedback? Or I'll plant the seed and I don't have to have feedback tonight, but maybe think about it. Um, the community separation between Loveland and Fort Collins is very well defined. It's, they've done it through IGAs. It's been uh, celebrated as a success to preserve open space, but it's literally a one-mile stretch where you've got urban level density backing up to a fence. On one side and urban level density back into a fence on the other with agricultural fields in between. You're literally looking across, uh, off, off a back deck and seeing a, a mile away, but still very visible, someone else's back deck where they're looking back at you. Is that the vision of community separator?
I, I, no, I would say, for me, any development we would have between fifty-eight and fifty-six on our, uh, northern half of the cooperative area, if you will, we would be low density. And I would, and I would want Fort Collins and Timoth to agree the same thing between fifty-two and fifty-four. And, and also have them agree that that would be low density, that it would kind of flow into the open space and if, you, yeah. Would, would be where I'd be going with it.
I do want to acknowledge just because as we're looking at this map right here, so there's circles right there, right? Those are activity centers, like major entrances. How do people get into Wellington? What is their first thing that they see when they enter our town? Where is the most traffic going to be, right? So, it's, and there is a very purposeful reason why, um, you know, it acknowledges commercial and, and, uh, medium density around that area because it is going to be super high traffic. Um, so, with that said, I, I love. Um, so with that said, I, I love the idea of the separation. Everything in the comprehensive plan celebrates agriculture, talking about lands. They want to see it and once they want it like surrounded by it. So. I absolutely agree. I just want to make sure that we're not taking away from the opportunity for a major corridor. For commercial um, in services, because the other thing is with the nature of how our town is growing. There are going to be no services available on the south side. So we have to make sure that we have um, and plan for spaces for services. For that part of the community. And if it's medium density, things that are walkable, that's the other thing. So. I, I agree wholeheartedly with what you say. But I want to make sure that we still maintain and protect the potential of having commercial medium density. But the way it is right here too, and I think we could probably do a better job, just like with our general zoning considerations. Is weed it out, low density, larger estate lots. Agriculture. Yeah, exactly. So, but I just don't want to lose that commercial medium density.
Yeah, I, I, I would fully agree with that. I don't know if maybe what we say is, you know, the, the I twenty five corridor rather than. Low density between fifty eight and fifty six and fifty two and fifty four, maybe what we say is the I twenty five corridor is. Medium density. And the rest of it. Like a low density type thing. I just throw that out.
Yeah. I definitely, but the scenario that you brought up. Cody is not what I want.
Yes.
Especially looking over the dump. But yeah, that, it looks silly way it, it works like that. And it's not like. I'm enjoying nature. It's like I couldn't go further than this point. But the point is to celebrate the open space and that's not what that's doing, so.
I appreciate the, the feedback. I, I think one of the, the notes I'd like to, to make if the board supports it is. I am definitely hearing protect some of the, the nodes around primary transportation routes for an appropriate intensity of development. I'm hearing protect that, that open space and, and do it in a respectful way that steps down the density to transition thoughtfully. Can I add to that defined development standards that include. Uh, vegetative buffers within the G M A.
Yeah.
To ensure the transition takes effect appropriately. Thank you.
Great idea, Cody. Good job.
The development standards for landscaping. I don't even know what that might be for the county. I have no idea. But is there any way that we could suggest or welcome our landscaping? Standards of native plants. No water use needs, those kind of things.
We, we definitely could through the I G A. We didn't think about how that looks, but we would.
Exactly as it is now, we might need to change it or whatever.
Right, we're, we're looking at our landscape and irrigation design manual. Um, those recommendations have, have different land use categories for different types of vegetative areas.
Right.
One of them is large lot, one of them is um, open space and we define. Um, like active recreation where it might need to be a turf field differently than a, a passive open space where it could be. Native grasses and native shrubs, um, that would be more respectful of that transition back to. Uh, an open space area, but still be low maintenance, cost effective and easy to maintain.
Right.
Low maintenance, easy maintenance for them. But, um, I think we could certainly do that and through the I G A, we'd be proposing, we're willing to do. This additional piece in order to protect this goal.
Yes.
So I, I think that would get some, some large support as long as it can be done cost effectively.
I mean, given water. Concerns and questions and how important that is to Laramie, but I think it might be really important to, to assist everybody up for success. And constantly be like what we're trying to accomplish here.
Um, did you, did you add? The transportation planning earlier when I asked the question if those two were. Together or not, because I think transportation plan is going to be huge. Like to hit home with I G A. Just with. Train, things of that nature that we're just not really getting capitalized on. Um, for having designated stop or say or whatnot.
Oh, for front, front range rail and transit opportunities?
Yeah.
Um, I think that's worthy of. Well, I, I think it's worthy of, of looking at because there's certainly opportunities to collaborate. I think the other, the counterpoint to that is Wellington, Laramie County, not the only entities involved in those. It would require other jurisdictional support and, and cooperation too. So there, there could be a. We need to think a little bit more about what that would look like. We can certainly identify it on the topics list and seek some feedback from the county as well, but I think that might be a. Uh, taken to a, another level where it might need a different type of I G A to create funding support to achieve those broader visions that cross more than just two municipalities. But I wouldn't want to leave it off the list for conversation.
I was just looking at the county zoning map. That area right there is actually already zoned rural, commercial. For the same one right here, this area, it's already zoned as a commercial area of the county. It was cooler because if there were to be any kind of development there, could potentially be commercial ready for. And there's another really weird one. I don't know why that one's. There is.
Which, which map are you referring to, trustee?
Uh, just the county zoning map.
Oh, okay.
But everything else is open.
No.
Good, good.
So, yeah, I, I don't have anything else to add. I was going to move into next steps, if that's all right. Um, so I appreciate the feedback. This won't be the only opportunity that we get to talk about this. We do envision that the next step in this process would be a joint work session with. Um, Laramie County Board of County Commissioners and facilitated by your town staff and county staff. Um, to help support that goal. Um, the vision was to schedule that after the. Election, um, and I don't know that a date has been set, but we, we will be working on that. Um, to kind of ca- carry this conversation on. Um, drafting an I G A is a process that takes some time to collaborate on what the needs are and what are the. Mutual terms of agreement, but the end document is fifteen to thirty pages depending on the detail. Um, it's not a particularly complicated document, but it means so much um, in terms of what we put into it. So. Um, I have examples, I know Mr. Sapienza has examples that we can build off of too. Tried and true practices or worked in other jurisdictions with the county. Um, and a lot of that is going to be. Almost same boilerplate, but, but tried and true, whether we can, can reuse some of that, those same terms to help us get a jump start and then really focus on the topics that. Are important between Laramie County and Wellington.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berg.
Of course, thank you.
It's exciting.
It is, it is very exciting.
The meeting will be after the first of the year. Because we have very short timeframe, just to get budgeted off and things like that. I talked to Loretta Volker yesterday. We determined it'd be probably sometime in February. So I just need to work with her on finalizing a date and we'll send that out.
One of the first two weeks.
One of the first two weeks of February. Got it.
Thank you, Penny.
Absolutely.
All right, uh, that's it.